The order remains, no meeting, let's take our prayer and place this just like very beautiful.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day of God, and we thank you for all the many blessings from our Father. Lord, we need rain on our cross, dear God, we just ask you, Lord, that you send it to us. And, Lord, as we go into this meeting tonight, dear God, we just ask you, Lord, that have your will and your way, Lord, and help us make each decision that will be pleasing to you. Help us make the right decision, dear God. Lord, again, we just thank you for everything you've done for our county and our state and our country, Lord. We just ask you continued blessings in a very special way, in all this way, as did Jesus Christ, sweet person, my dear.
Amen.
Amen. I pray that the nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the religion for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We've got to approve the minutes for the April eighteenth and the May sixth workshop meeting.
Make a motion?
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor. Okay, number five, approve the finances. Motion made by Roger. Second by Steve, all in favor. Okay, number six, rescind the previous motion to purchase a few ambulance, number six there is where that we took, you know, here, you want to explain?
Well, we ordered the, uh, we got some bids for ambulance, but our schedule was supposed to be ordered quite yet, and there was a conflict between what Ronnie had and what we had over in our office, and we discovered it just before the meeting last, uh, month. So, they will hold, and two, we don't have quite enough funds in there, in the spots to camp for that, but they will hold that same price until September, so we're just gonna rescind it and then revisit this later.
Okay, make a motion. Got a motion by Brad, and second by Jerry, all in favor. Number seven, Chief Charles Watson, approve the hazards mitigation that they grant, calling on this plane to a level of.
Yes, sir, we have, uh, one of the plans that we have to keep up, the federal government requirements to have, has a mitigation plan. This plan is basically just put in place, identifies certain things in our community that are part targets, and then any type of hazard mitigation we have that will work, uh, towards trying to soften those, also, uh, generators, if we may need certain facilities, and just a lot of things that goes in this plan. Uh, the plan that we currently have was, was adopted, uh, by commissioners, approved by FEMA in two thousand fourteen, it's not due again, where you knew it was two thousand nineteen, but there's about a three-year window that you have to, to go through as far as applying for the grant, getting the grant, getting RDC to drop the grant, or write the actual plan, and then have the plan approved by the commissioners, public hearings, approved by GMA, then approved by FEMA. And all this got to be done by November two thousand nineteen, which is a good ways of playing, but it'll figure tomorrow. So, we got to, we got to go ahead and start that process. The first process is just applying for the grant, uh, the grant amount basically is thirty-four thousand dollars of that, the county will have to pay forty-three hundred dollars in kind. And what I mean by in kind is, we will have meetings, uh, probably ten or twelve weeks we'll have to visit the plan, look at the plan, uh, identify, uh, things that we've done, identify what we need to add to it, and as we do that, there'll be people that will come to the meetings, uh, public safety, other people that will come, we'll, about a, a range of folks that will come in, and when they come in, every time we have a meeting, they actually sign a piece of paper stating, this is what my time for, and we apply that. So, when it's all said and done, the county has no money involved in it, we just have time. But the whole grant will be around thirty-four thousand dollars with our part, uh, I think it's like twenty-four thousand that the federal will pay, forty-three hundred that the, uh, that the state will pay, and then forty, uh, forty-two, uh, there's forty-two ones instead of forty-three. So, this is, there was a very small window of opportunity to get this done, so we've already completed the application and the chairments have signed, but I just need y'all to, to vote. I mean, we, it's, we have to do it. If you don't do the mitigation plan, you get no grants, period. So, it's just another thing that FEMA or the federal government says, you do this or you don't get any money. So, and they give you the money to do it, so it's not a, it's not a, a, a large task, but it's just out of quick time. So, I just need y'all to approve it.
Got a motion by Steve, second by Jerry. You got one voting?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. And I can tell you, it's good he got started the last year, year before last, uh, in the heart of Georgia meeting, a lot of them come in there late on the day, and they didn't have time to get them done, that's in the right grants, and I know two different, all there. All right. Uh, rate the discussion, approve or deny the purchase here, the glitchers for the use of them. This is, uh, is anyone here? Okay, uh, I had talked to Dwayne Johnson, and, uh, Dwayne pretty well heads it up, up there, uh, and I went down when he was in the hospital, talked to him, and thank the Lord, he's home now. Uh, he's in a wheelchair and, uh, still has trouble with his right side, and all, but, uh, they want the glitchers, that I understand by him, they may be the people.
Yeah.
Okay. Ma'am, we discussing the glitchers now, as y'all come in?
Yes.
And, uh, I have, y'all come on up to the podium when they're there, and, uh, I had talked to Dwayne, and, uh, he had told me what he was looking for, and I came back and I talked to two different companies. One company called me and told me they didn't make that type of glitcher, and the other company never called me back. Uh, are y'all the type that pushes back?
Yes.
Okay. Like Southside, have you been in Southside, sir?
I just longer than one there.
Okay, uh, Southside Church has that, and, but, uh, I had talked to him, and I had noted by two companies, one called me back, and said they didn't make that type, they made the little kind like at the baseball field, and they made the ones that it was up steeper than a football field, and they did not make any that pulled out and pushed in or whatever. So, I didn't have any other resources, and I was just going to go to the commissioners and note what we, did y'all find anybody that helped them to make them precise, the person?
Uh, no, Dwayne said that he had already talked to the school system about these new videos, and that's where he.
All right. Well, uh, we have a bid there, and it's forty thousand to, uh, twenty-nine, or, no, twenty-one something, okay? But now, are y'all only one side? Now, when I talked to Dwayne, and, uh, you, you tell me what y'all asking for right now? Do you know that?
Well, now, what Dwayne's on lead is that he's looking for one on each side, and they would give him a discount because of.
Okay, that's what I did. So, it would be that twenty thousand, or what, what's the price here, or right now?
The price here is twenty-one dollars, sixty-nine, uh, one dollar twenty-five.
Okay. What do you want, man?
Six.
Six over one twenty-five.
Six.
Twenty-one thousand, six hundred, one dollar and twenty-five. Okay.
I've got twenty-one, six, eleven, twenty-five.
Was that a blessing, didn't it? Put on some blessings.
Yeah.
And she's correct, it's twenty-one. It's twenty-one, sixty, eleven.
Twenty-one, six, eleven, twenty-five. Okay. And after both sides, or one side?
I talked with Dwayne myself, I thought, I just stopped, I had to talk with him. Like, uh, Tennessee, uh, the company will give a discount if you do both sides, so it will only be twenty-one a side, it will be a discount on both sides. And they have the spots for us, they're full of interest.
They haven't spent any, and I believe that there's more than enough to pay for the two section of glitcher, uh, we had confirmed the end before the meeting, and so. More than at least forty-three thousand, if it comes, it's forty-eight thousand dollars in that fund. And so, uh, by that, and I tried, and like I said, I talked to the school, the school wanted to put them in touch with these people here, uh, so, the person in Southside wasn't sure who ordered them, and I, I, like I said, I called two companies, and one didn't make it. Uh, I'm asking, can we take it and get a motion, go ahead with it, because they do have the funds, and that's the way that their board has elected what they need. So, I'll do that, I have a motion.
I have a motion, they're going to both sides.
Yep.
They encourage them to do both sides.
Got a motion on the table? I'll say it. Got a second for Brad. All in favor? Thank you. Approve or deny the musical festival on October twenty-second at the old recreation park, requested by Johnny Watson. Johnny used to have it behind, they outgrown, and, uh, two years, I know, and it leads to, and, uh, so, uh, they have it out there, I think they, we've got some bathrooms approved, and then we could take care of it, and I believe they may bring, some mean, I'm not quite sure, but we've always let them hope it, and a lot of local talent, so. All right. Motion second, all in favor? Thank you.
This is Swift, you are going to sit in the chair of the recreation park, and I think I was thinking about last, and there was nothing being handled out there, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know that's why we threw it last.
Yeah, it is, that weekend, nothing. Number ten, approve or deny the reappointment of Stephanie Gotten to the board of election, uh, it's in their Christie's office.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Steve, second by Roger, all in favor?
I'm gonna tell you about you, Mike.
I didn't want to talk too loud, and what did?
I hear you fine, I can't, I can't hear the other.
Can't hear any of them?
I'm static.
You're static.
Static. Turn it off.
Turn it off.
Turn it off, I can't hear. Hello? I wasn't hearing you much.
Every now and then, they just go into some crazy.
I hope it's all cooler, and, um, maybe weather's coming. Approve or deny the Jordan event service agreement here, that, uh, you, you want to?
This is the, uh, public defender, we approved this last year, uh, it's, probably can maybe explain it better than I can, but it's where you have somebody who can't afford an attorney, won't be appointed for you, they do investigative work as well, it's kind of like an insurance policy, so if there's a murder trial or something, we don't have to afford an attorney for you.
Maybe you have to, you can pick a change whether you want to or not.
Yeah, right.
Well, also, you have to provide.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second for Brad, and second by Roger, all in favor? Approve or deny the Bowie's health insurance renewal for Bruce Ross, Bruce here. Probably the first year, probably four years that we had met with him, but, uh, there were no injuries, policy stayed the same, and so it will go on as it is.
There's a little degree.
There's a little degree.
What happened last year?
Uh, I think it was year before, year before they did, yes, sir. So, I have a motion.
Uh, I'd like to ask.
Motion by Jerry, second by Steve, all in favor? Number thirteen, discuss finding someone to serve on the Pines and Menon Health Corps. We tried and asked, and we hadn't had anybody that has come aboard and submitted any names. Do y'all want to try to see if anybody else is there, here? Are you gonna nominate somebody? Then they're not here. Okay, gonna have a motion to table it to the next meeting, and if we run it in the paper. Uh, we like, okay, before that we get to table it, do we want to go ahead and run it two more weeks?
So, we can do it.
And, uh, and the motion, or we try to call people, or, and our community, and see if we can get somebody that, uh, that wants to do it. All right, so, need a motion to table it?
I'd like a motion to table it.
Jerry made a motion?
Wait, wait, make your motion for evidence.
All right.
I'd like a motion, that, uh, two more weeks, then.
And I serve this one. I've got a motion on the table, to run it for two more weeks, and then that same motion, if we table it this time, go.
Well, you don't need to table it, because you made a motion to run it.
Well, I guess we did not.
Yes, I did.
All right, we've got a motion to table it. Second by Roger, made by Jerry, all in favor?
Why didn't you say a motion to table?
I obviously, I'd have run it, run it for two more weeks. I thought if it don't do, we do not have to table it, if we just going to run it two more weeks.
Well, you discussed it, when you came to a resolution, you said that's what your motion was. So, we'll be.
In the book? Uh, fourteen approved, across the area of Kramer family, uh, they was, we only have two, uh, places to hold bodies, uh, one had been in there, this one a pretty good while, and, uh, the coroner, Tommy Carter, had checked out all avenues, uh, about the family, or any money, any land, anything, and didn't have anything, and if something had to happen, we wouldn't have another place to put anybody. So, Jerry had to contact us, and, um, everybody was in agreement to go ahead and, uh, have the person, and the county paid their part, and that's what we did, so now I'm asking for a motion, if we go ahead and approve it, or if we got records to back up what we done.
Did you see that?
I might motion before you. We got a motion by Brad, second by Jerry, all in favor? Thank you. Attorney Carla Powell, the update board is on moving.
Yeah, I should have, you said the one, it's two weeks to look out, I think it's kind of been a little long for the areas, trying to make sure to recover everything that we can, and I should have to come back and, once we find something else that we need, I think there are issues, so, I would say it might be a, I don't even know.
Okay, will, will the insulation pipes, will it be different for dirt roads than it is a paved road?
I think so. I would do it, I would.
Yeah, that, I believe that's the way that we would, yeah, well, I mean, I understand that we can change it, no, but I mean, if, if a dirt road, a pipe busts, and it starts leaking, it'll start giving in, the paved roads won't, and, um, and like the Brockton Highway, where the state come in and fixes that one, we've had three other ones that's been on county roads, that these old cement pipes has took and settled, and they split at the bottom in about six inches, and it's still in at the top, but out at the bottom, and then when the rain goes through, it washes out, and it caves in, and so, that's what I do, to make sure.
Yeah, I'd rather get this one.
Okay. Uh, sixteen, public comments.
I'll go first tonight.
All right.
Um, couple things, go back to item number thirteen, is there any schooling required on that board? And is it a three-year term, too?
It's three-year term, and they were, why? They presented.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I read the paper, but I don't remember any schooling at all. I, I, I can't tell you that to a hundred percent, but I'm ninety-nine percent, I don't remember any schooling that it, uh, trying to think of somebody that.
Can I make a suggestion on that? If it's the same.
You're not suggesting it, or are you saying you will?
No, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Um, if this is the same pining, where the kids from our school system, is some kids that has disabilities, is, uh, carried from our county to, uh, Appleton County, is this the same thing? Or do y'all know?
It's like a regional homework.
Well, I was gonna make a suggestion, I think there's around fifteen or twenty kids, you might could find a parent of one of those kids that would be willing and know more about that, if it's the same facility.
I don't know that it is, I know some, because, is that the same one, where they do some crafts thing, and some other, and I'm not.
That's mine, maybe it's not.
I don't.
There's a pining, I do know it's pining.
It is pining, it's called sunshine, sir.
No, the one I was told about is pining, I'll find out, I'll find out, and I'll try to get with it.
You want to, just go ahead and number that, too?
No, thank you, I got my hands full right now.
Nate, the same thing, you know, they used to go by, saying, they were about fourteen, and this county went over there, and, uh, so, we don't have anybody in this carlist, so we need just to table it.
Well, y'all done done that.
Have done that, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I was just asking questions about.
Comment about it, yeah, I understand that, but then, yeah, all right, you gonna, you gonna find out if it's.
Yeah, I'll see if I can help y'all find somebody, how about that?
That would be our best of all.
All right, um, second thing, the last month, we was here, and there was some discussion about, uh, an employee in the tax assessor's office getting a raise for passing a test. My understanding, being out in the community, this employee has not received their pay increase. I also understand that it's whatever's in their budget, I'm being told that there is a line budget item that specifies each employee, I've never seen that. The budgets that I've always seen, in the three, four years I've been coming up there, it just says salaries, or part-time salaries, or contract labor. I want an explanation why this employee has not received her raise.
Because those numbers are specific, even though you don't see the detail, every single dollar in there is allocated towards a specific salary.
You gonna have to prove that to me, because I've never seen it, in the years, even.
You haven't seen it, I'm, I'm saying to you that when we do those numbers, we don't just make up numbers. That, that number that's in there is specifically for each individual who works there, salary. And it was brought up for a vote, because to increase it, you have to amend the budget to allow that, because it wasn't in the budget. Whatever is voted on, and whenever the budget's passed, is appropriate, appropriated for exactly what it is, and, and so it would have required a change, and we didn't vote on it.
Okay, I know y'all didn't vote on it, but I always thought, under the impression that y'all didn't have to vote on it, and I went to their meeting today, and in their budget, their, uh, financials, it has salaries as the first line item, the budget's ninety-eight thousand dollars, the year-to-date amount that they have spent is sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cent, the balance in their budget is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cent, which is, uh, sixty-three point five percent. Up under that says salaries, Board of Assessors, because my understanding, they get paid a little minimum fee for each member of the board, and then down up under, on the fourth line item, is part-time labor, and it's twelve-five. And we still have money left into the part-time, so.
You can't just move numbers, you can't move money that's allocated for one thing to another. We're not trying to do that, sir.
I got what she said.
It's a line item, it's a single line item. Yes, when you build a budget, you put components in it to arrive at a number, but the, the budget that these gentlemen voted on as a governing authority for the tax assessor's office is one line. Under office supplies, you don't have it broken out as to how many boxes of paper we can buy, or how many pencils, or how many pens. Last year, when we hired Lerner, his name wasn't in there, but there was a pool of money that allowed us to hire him. If these gentlemen need to make a vote, have a vote to pay the lady the six hundred dollars, please, would one of you make the motion, and somebody second it and get on with it? The question that you had on the agenda at the last meeting was to approve or deny the raise, that was not in their purview, that's what we discussed. If you wanted to move money from one individual in a budget line item to another, that would have been a whole different question on the agenda. We're talking about six hundred dollars, we're splitting that here. You know, you, you wanna talk about real money? There's almost a million dollars in uncollected taxes out there, let's talk about real money.
I think last month, the associate, you did pull up.
Sir.
Where's the six thousand dollars?
The question was whether or not you should grant her the raise, the question was not that the administrator came up with after the fact that there was money under her name in the line item. Here's the budget that we received for today's meeting, the top line shows the amount of the budget under salaries and personnel. Yes, when you build a budget, you look at all the components in it as in a worksheet, and you might say A, B, C, D, each of them adding up, and then you have a line item, but that doesn't mean that you don't move money around within that. We're not changing the amount of salaries. I mean, you know, come on.
Well, you had, you had us to put, uh, forty-something thousand in the budget last year, because y'all was going to hire a team of preachers, do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
All right, then Kathy already had a salary in there.
Yes, sir.
And then we had, uh, another salary that was in there, correct?
Correct.
All right, so then, when Kathy moved from hers to another one.
Correct.
And all, and y'all brought it, and she got raised up, all right, then, what, you telling me that you can take the whole budget and spend it on?
No, sir.
If you want to, that's one.
If we had, if we had found somebody to hire this year, we would have hired them, and we would have still had money left over. The county will be getting back approximately thirty thousand dollars from that one line item. We're talking about six hundred dollars for somebody who has earned it.
I think what he's trying to say is prevent from hiring another person, if the money was she went to, why not give it to her and just double her work up? Is that what you're going to do?
Double her work up?
When, well, we're not, we can't double her, but she, she, no, sir, she is more valuable to us now because of her certification, that's why she got the dollar fifty and our raise, and into the new budget for next year, that amount, that increase is built in to the new budget that we've submitted, that we've requested. It's nothing more than a control issue.
Is that, is each person's salary, or whatever, is it individualized on? Is the guy, is each person's salary or whatever, is it individualized on the budget?
It is a total.
Like it was put in there that we got so-and-so, so much.
Thirty-three, forty-five, and twenty-one.
That's in the Board of Assessors. That's in the working documents. That's not the budget that you gentlemen approved. On the budget that you looked at a week ago and that you look at next week from what I understand, the Board of Assessors is but one line.
Are you gentlemen trying to tell me, let me explain it this way. Are you gentlemen trying to tell me that if just say a full-time employee leaves from over there and you hire a part-time employee and you don't have the money in your part-time line item that you can't pay them? You can't move money out of your salary employee down to your part-time to pay a part-time? That's what y'all saying. You're contradicting yourself. The other thing I'd like to say while I have the floor is that my understanding with going to these meetings, our tax assessor's office should have a class one, a class two, and a class three. Should have one of each. Correct me if I'm wrong. We only have, up until she passed that test, we had a class three. Now that she's passed that test, we have class one. The Department of Revenue sets that, not you, the board, not us, the public.
So you gotta have a one, two entry?
Yes, sir.
Then how are we going if you only have two employees?
Because we've been using GMASS. Because it's just about impossible to find somebody that's a two that come work here.
And when you, when you use GMASS, then you don't have to hesitate.
Then we can get away with it. They still want us to have a third person in there.
We did take, thought we had GMASS and I was waiting to see if you'd say that. We didn't even have a three.
That's correct.
But then being we had them, you didn't have to.
Because of GMASS. We talked, we talked about that last year.
And, and they will pass the...
Yes, they will pass the, um, the digest with the staffing that we currently have. Their, their latest recommendation that we received was that we should have, and at least one more level two. If we could find that person, we would be glad to have them. Up to now, in a year and a half, we received one application and that person just was not suitable. That person was a level two, but she had spent six months in one office and then went to another office and then went to a third office about every six to eight months.
But to answer Ms. Washington's question.
Yes.
That's what they recommend, but it is not the law that you got to have. Because if it is, they wouldn't pass the digest.
Because we have the third-party contractor, they are prepared to accept that.
When we took, and before Kathy got the three, there wasn't a one or a two. She was a two.
Yes.
And we didn't have a one or a three.
That's correct.
And the digest passed last year.
That's correct.
And it's because of GMASS.
That's right.
Yes, and that was part of the discussion.
We pay them to be on board.
Yes.
Now, I've got one more example and I'll sit down and hush. At last month's meeting, y'all approved for a part-time position in the Board of Elections to go full-time. How is that adjusted in the budget?
It was not. It won't today. It won't affect it in their budget. That's how we vote, yeah. She, she won't be full-time.
To July first.
That's right.
Am I, okay, this is what, this is the understanding when we left last month. My understanding with, um... Yes, was that if you had the money, the budget, that me, I'm gonna give it to her. That, that's, that's me. General, that's me. If you got the money, give it to her.
Well, here's the thing. I have put this in next year's budget and with the back pay. So when that's voted on, she will get the money. But I wish you would have let it come up for a vote like it should have.
Then weren't the questions different?
And it would have probably passed and we wouldn't be sitting here.
Then weren't the questions different, sir? Say what you mean so that we all know what you're talking about. Your question was, would they approve her getting a raise? Not would they approve moving money from one subcategory to another.
Basically the same thing to amend the budget to accommodate this ending.
Well, then put it in that you want to amend the budget. Don't ask them to approve somebody getting a raise when it's not their purview. All this stuff keeps coming up and making these gentlemen look like they don't know what they're doing. And there's no reason for it. There really isn't. It's simple. We're all trying to do the work at the county and get the county kicked here off. Let's do it. Let's quit the bickering over nonsense. You're talking six hundred dollars. You're not talking about a thousand dollars or several thousand dollars.
Never if it's a dollar.
There's thirty odd thousand coming back to you. One of you gentlemen would be happy enough to make a motion, to make the transfer. That would be wonderful.
Didn't you, uh, last... Didn't you say that we didn't have to vote on it?
Yes, sir. You don't have to vote on her raise, Mr., your administrator is now saying that you have to move the, the money from one subcategory on open position to another subcategory within a line item of the budget. Never, ever heard of it before. I've talked to three CPAs in the last two weeks about it. Nobody has ever heard of doing that in a county budget. I have a very dear friend that's a county attorney and a county administrator down south. And everyone, I've said, they've never seen a budget like that before. So I guess we're leaving it back on that one.
Well, I thought that you guys done give her the raise and I thought that it was sent down last month.
We did, sir, but she's never got the money. Unfortunately, we don't write the check.
See, I think you agreed to that, didn't you, Wayne? You said it was in his part. Y'all gonna make him handle that.
Well, it does, I tell you, Gary says, our administrator is that when you set up a budget and they more money in the budget, and he's right, thirty-something thousand dollars will be coming back. But that's because we did not have a chief appraiser.
We have a chief appraiser.
Huh?
We have a chief appraiser that's another position.
I didn't think we ain't got one now, did we? We did not have one, did we?
If the dollars is in there to spare, then what, what problem off, I mean, give her a raise and let's shut this mess up? If the money's there and it according to them is there. Everybody else and you doesn't approve it to get a raise? I wonder why it's always that office that's the problem in the foreheads? And that office is what brings the money in this foreheads? But I'm a worker, we're not on that. That's why we approved these people to do it. If we need a motion, I'll make one.
What can do with that meeting, gentlemen? It doesn't matter whether it's on agenda or not. This is regularly scheduled meeting. The only time you have to speak of the agenda is when it's a call meeting. Regular scheduled meeting, you put a call meeting that you want.
Comes up here.
That's right.
It should have been down last month? It was mine, we had it last month.
We don't do the front of that. Why, why am I voting on it? He's already going down to the front.
Because they didn't get it.
They didn't get it.
But if we vote on it, our, that probably will...
But, uh... Hope, hope so. What we need to do, amend it before they can?
In my opinion, I think the main budget is we can sign a check. You're not taking money from one department and putting it into another. Now, that's just cause two separate.
Yeah, but, uh, hold, hold on. Ms. Thomas said that we in a regular meeting, are we down to public comment? Business of...
Can this something that comes up, maybe this is something that has come up, you vote, I mean, if you can, you don't have to address it, something that people...
But I don't want to come in next month talking about this again, that you said, six hundred dollars. I mean, I don't want to talk about it.
Well, what I'm saying is that we, if we don't control that and we ain't supposed to vote on it, why don't we vote on it?
Because somebody needs to tell somebody to write a check and sign.
I thought they started last month, it takes a little bit.
We're talking, there, she said six hundred dollars. So that, that here had proved to the next budget?
Yeah, that was what the difference was. And I had put that in the new budget so that she would get her money since it didn't happen the way I thought it would before. So she would get her money either way. If the budget's approved.
So... But ain't you saying it's gonna be within next year before she gets her money?
Well, July.
Our year starts in July first. So it's just a few weeks.
But you don't pay her for the back time that when y'all started?
That's exactly what I said. I put it in there so she would get her money. All they have to do is approve the budget. Cause then it would be up to them.
That's coming up.
Why not just give it to our own of this budget where it is?
I wanna go and do a dollar and a red man tonight. I made the motion that we approved it. Whatever we got to prove, give us six hundred dollars.
Have you for a raise?
A raise?
Yes, I'm, I'm, we're with six hundred dollars, we six hundred dollars a week.
Well, that was for the entire period.
Entire period from time that she passed her test till the whole...
Just approve her raises.
Alright, got a budget on tape.
I'm hoping to approve her raises.
For that, for, and start paying her. That's up there. Alright, second. Alright, we got a budget in a second.
Y'all not gonna go back to when she passed the test? We talked about this last month.
That's, that's what.
I thought you said...
Give her a raise and take back. I think I let it pay.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I'm sorry. We can't hear about you.
Alright.
You see why I said it front?
We got the motion. We got the second. Alright, I'm writing to the vote.
I wanna fuss if I suck, that's me.
Alright. And still vote the company, like you told. So Gary, what we have to do is when we make a budget for a office, we'll have to take the exact amount of, like the chief appraiser, I'm just using that, the sheriff department. That's the sheriff department and his name and then how much his salary would be. And then each deputy, we're gonna have to break it down.
If we go, Mr. Dissensus?
No, sir, that's not what I'm suggesting. That's what yours suggested.
Because, whatever.
Well, I'm saying, I'd ask how I'd do the panel for it.
Well...
Well, it's, I know exactly what it is. Just because it's added together in a, a line item doesn't make any difference. But it's the same, that's what I'm saying. It's the same difference if it was on each line item.
I mean, that's, alright, but we meant bit and it's come back. Alright, now, when somebody, when you put a line item in there and you say that Ms. Jones and she's gonna make so-and-so this year, or it comes down that she needs to make overtime. Now, if that budget says that's all Ms. Jones is going to pay, then, and if it's twenty-five thousand dollars and then it comes down to the last check and she, and she would go over to twenty-nine or twenty-five-five, then are we not gonna be able to pay her?
We'll be over budget. But you'll pay her.
That's why you don't break it down by employee?
But then if you don't break it down employee, you do what you want to, because you just said that.
Well, that's basically what every other department does.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
That's why you have a line item. As long as you stay within that line item, you're gold.
Thirty from already give it to whoever.
Yeah, that, that ain't gonna plug. I mean, because if you do, that if somebody could take another office, not that one or whatever, and somebody leaves, I'm gonna take this and, and give it to this one.
That's been done before in the county. Where one person left and they took that salary and divided it among everybody else in the department.
The ACCG book states that that money must be appropriated based on how it was voted for in the budget. So if the budget you voted for one that was thirty-three, one was forty-five, and one was twenty. That's what it is. He's saying you can take from any of them and move it around however he wants to. And that's what I'm saying, that's not right. It has to be spent what its original purpose was intended.
Mr. Chairman, you've been the longest one on that board, I think. Eight years? This your eighth year? Have you ever approved a budget that had each separate line item?
No, ma'am, but I see the need that we go into, need to. I mean, and not just because this department, I mean, it's something that happened in the sheriff department that if a deputy, he hired last week and they, there's just one amount in there, his salary and all his deputies is in that one salary. Then if he hired a deputy next week and one left that's been there ten years and might have got a few more raises, then he could take and give that deputy, and I'm just using him for example. He could give that deputy and start him off more than somebody else is making. I mean, something, uh, I've never known this, that you could do that. I didn't know that you could shift money from one person to another. I thought that, you know, when it's based out at, at that time. And just so that it's already been done in another office.
Well, for instance, look, how, how can you micro-manage that? You know, just say over there, what if one of them goes and gets a class two certification? You're not going, you're not going to reward an employee? You gonna have to wait to the whole next calendar year?
Well, see, that's the way that I had come over here probably fourteen, ten, twelve, fourteen years ago and asked and went back and does the mints of it. But, and at that time, I said if they went and got appraiser one, that they get fifty cent a hour. Fifty cent a hour for forty hours is twenty dollars. Twenty times fifty is a thousand dollars. And they agreed to it, it's voted on by the commissary before. Well, between this year and whatever, I mean, we're getting into a lot of debt. But what Ms. Heather went from part-time to full-time and full-time to appraiser one. And there in one year, she'll be, and I mean, I don't have the exact number running, but probably be three dollars and fifty cents, three dollars and seventy-four cent rate. And just say four dollars times forty. And then multiply that times fifty-two weeks. And, you know, that's a big increase. But yes, I thought, but now she got, you know, the other rates and then now she's got this one. So I mean, somewhere you got to have it to where, you know, that you've got some kind of control over, over. And appraiser two, to answer your question, is worth more than appraiser one.
That's right.
But when you do that, if she goes on in three months and gets appraiser two and well, the year fixing to roll over, I think she's got three, three dollars and sixty-eight cent of raise. A hour per hour that she had. You checking, yeah, no?
No, sir.
You think she had?
She got a dollar eighty-six last year because everybody...
Last year, but last year did the same paper.
No, sir. The last fiscal year, I think it was. This year she got a dollar fifty because she...
And I don't disagree with what I've been told by two. It does, it was this year and that.
It may be.
This year start, because, you know, you the same person told us that Kathy made a certain grade on the first test and she did. So I mean, I'm not...
She got her certification, sir.
She got, yeah, but you, you told us the score that she made.
I never told you a score. I didn't know a score.
Don't do that.
I'm not. You can fabricate whatever you want, but it's not, I told you that and I showed you her certificate. I didn't know what score she got. The department issues a certificate when you pass a test. Amen. That's all that matters. When the question came up when Mr. Wills was here, I said, my comment was, a doctor that graduates, first in his class is called doctor. What do you call one that graduated last in his class? You still call him doctor. But this isn't accomplishing anything. I understand there are people in this room that have issues. I understand that. We've tried our best to put the issues behind us and work for the good of the county. Unfortunately, those ones that have the issues are just not cooperating. And we'll do anything we can to figure out a way around this. Too many prima donnas.
Anybody else any comment?
Yes. Last time over here, I went to the car with Steve with the guy from the Georgia Department of Resources. You can stick with that guy. And another thing I wanted to bring y'all's attention, it's I'm not feeling this just for myself. I'm good for the other sixteen acres that I have. I think you were gonna like him on... Was there a response and going to leave it out?
No, sir, no, it's not. What I liked, I liked all that conversation. Mind the conversation of Mr. Wizness's conversation. And I made one of the options that Mr. Wizness gave me, gave to me. I passed that information on the, on the senate, on GAD, it's in my head. It was wanting to, uh, commission Tola. And my comments to each of them was, I'm waiting for the instruction because I can't go to you without instruction from you. And that's broken off.
That's why I said what I wanted for you to talk to him.
Sure.
So, let's hold it now.
I've done my part.
So, now we're back to your commissions?
Yep.
And I also have some pictures I'd like to share with you, show you what I'm looking at.
I think I've already been answered.
Pass one now, because somebody's got it on, they've not seen what this water's doing. So, you've seen it. But you're gonna have to excuse yourself. The last two pictures, Gary, they're your fix to get, for the come last week and the mortgage.
They do.
County. What is the motor trams? This people's box is to my attention. They left all that to free right in that ditch. Now, it's not that the pipe that crosses under Bush Road. It don't have to be a heavy rain, this is a lot raining, it's what happens.
I found I'm getting my, this, this water that he's talking about, it's on the start of this house. It don't start across Douglas Highway, this water start, this same ditch runs across the Broxton Highway, and it keeps going, this water, same ditch runs across Old Douglas Road, because that comes up, they'll head up on those, because through, through the field where the solar plant keeps, it goes under the.
Right on after.
The road down there, it crosses back under the, uh, another, like you said. Steel roads crosses his and Tom's, AJ Williams Road, and then turns goes under Brooks Church Road, Gus's under, Sattila Church Road, goes into here, the creek, or Little Sattila Creek. I mean, water, this, the water don't start his property, this water starts, does not start.
And I think when Mr. O'Lootin, he owns some property back up in there, he dug a ditch across this field back there, and it's actually dumping all that water now, rather than help us. And without that ditch, you see that ditch running on my property, it stopped up with trees, like you made a good remark last month was here, I think to Gary, you know, it's been thirty years ago since that ditch was cleaned. Like you said, clean it out, you want it to go for another thirty years.
But when you clean it out, first of all, it is, is on your property, and that Bishop Creek, which starts over on the old Grand Road, goes across there, and cuts down through, it's over, it's over the water conservation office. And a core engineer, and them dug that ditch, that comes all the way through there, goes through Beesley's, out there, and crosses over, and goes through O'Lootin's, and it goes on down to Glen Aton's Pond, out of Glen's Pond, all the way to Lake Mary. And.
No, this water don't go over to Lake Mary's?
The one I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, okay.
That crosses there, it beats it, and it crosses the backs of highways, and crosses over there on the old Grand.
That's, that has nothing to do with it.
Yes, that's, but that's Bishop Creek watershed. Okay. If you go to the solar water, and up here at the, my, well, Mount Julie's office, the core, it's in there that Jeff Davis County has to keep it up, and we dug it out. I can't find anything, Mr. Jennings over there, and that's called, you went to Jennings, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I did too. And can't find anything that what this other ditch that you're talking about has ever been turned over to the county. And like you said, thirty years ago, somebody probably did go up there.
Been thirty years. Was it a natural stream?
Well, I've always done, had to shoot with it eight years ago, a bad eight years. But y'all keep bringing that up, but how many, how many ditches did Jeff Davis carry on, all these ditches that stood on Jeff Davis County? That I know, and I've been in here a long time, from oh-four to oh-eight, we dug ditches all over this county. They don't have nothing to do with Jeff Davis County, they're on the taxpayers, but for goodness sake, Jeff Davis carried them all, we wouldn't have even dug these, clean them out, on a agreement with the people, no paperwork signed. They all over this county like that. So, Buck James got one behind his property that we dug it out in oh-six. Uh, Jeff Davis County don't own it. It starts behind Flax and Boos, it goes up to High and High Steel Road, and we cleaned it out. We got other ditches on, uh, Bars Williams Road, that cuts through to this big ditch that you're talking about, that county put there, that we've had to clean out, that he cleaned it out again. I mean, this, this, the problem has come in since oh-eight, because from oh-eight, oh-four, we didn't have no problem putting, cleaning out a man's ditch. The problem is with the commissioners since oh-eight to now, is what's problematic. That's the only, that's the only privilege a taxpayer gets in Jeff Davis County, that the county has the business their heart, and they can clean the drainage ditch out on their property.
See, I thought that's what we get you guys in here for, is to help keep the community up, make it look good, keep it looking good, keep the water off of us. I'm losing my mobile home because of this water. I've had to rip all the carpets out of it because of the mildew and the, because my mobile home sets the water, I have to wait until my car in winter time. It's not, it's not pleasant. And I know, he said last month over here, that he gets flooded too. That's impossible. You're up on top of a hill.
No, I didn't say I get flooded.
Says you get water.
I have water problems in the back corner of my yard.
But you don't get it as bad as I do.
No, I don't. But I mean, I'm affected by the same ditch you talked about yesterday.
And he's wondering where that water was going, like, he said, and Jerry said, if we get that ditch cleaned out, that water naturally will flow on through. Where it starts is right there where my property is. And these others, uh.
And the city said it didn't start there?
No, the problem starts on the other side, what he said.
They've just been building a bit of problem.
It's all just grown up.
It's been filled in, or it's just filled in over the years?
Well, that.
I mean, ain't nobody filled it yet.
Before he was talking about, and somebody has said, it's gonna get to be a very nice, it's, it's like a friend. Is what it is, but then sometime, there's no water in it, it's not a running stream, uh.
Yeah, I, there's all them bricks and stuff that's in there, I don't know how that got there. That's when they were building them houses, they done that.
Well, that's before you own the property.
Exactly.
But I know in the future, in the past, we have, we have cleaned out ditches.
Yeah, I know.
How, how did y'all go on private property without having to?
Go to the landowner, and they say, do it, because they have done it for years.
As long as we sign an easement, saying it's all up to you, come on my property, if you have your something, it's on me, not the county.
Well, I'm the same spirit as me on that, I'm in agreement to help you, okay? But from what I read, what God gave me, is still states, and that's, that is private property, is also wetlands, which require.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Oh, you did?
Your story's correct, before it gets started, she knows better than that too.
So, I don't know, it's what I said was, if you would have to contact your department or the engineers to get a letter from the state, that it wasn't.
See, I've already talked to the core engineer. She says she no longer has anything to do with it. Now, that's between me and you four guys.
Can I just, to try and solve this, you know, the city council makes lots of problems, we don't do everything right, but when they build Dixwings, there's severe, that, that warehouse, which is on private property, that sits over there behind it, and that belonged to Dixwings, but it sits over the side, there's some severe corrosion problems there. The, uh, it's to the point that it endangered Dixwings. Some child may walk out, Dixwings will walk over there, fall into that washout. There are all kinds of things about it. We're in the process, DOT, that, I mean, that big hole by, uh, Dixwings, it belonged to DOT. We, in order to change that drainage, we had built on private property, we just went and got easements to run behind the, uh, behind the car wash, and the lady that lives there, I'd get easements from both of them. The easement we got, running from the Tallahassee Street to Ty on the back, DOT's working with us to close that, that hole in there, but big part, but the thing is, we're working around the private property problem by getting easements. And, and what we're trying to do is find some way to help, rather than find, find some way to say, well, we, we, we don't know, we can't do that. I think you can find a way, if you'll try to find a way, you know, easements may be the way.
That's something else I'd like to ask you, we should go over that, just, those people's asking this. He asked you, Joe, how much you think it would cost to clean that ditch out? And I told her, I said, well, being the county's got the equipment. Probably diesel fuel, manpower, four hundred bucks.
And did you say there's some trees? But didn't you say there's some trees, like I get?
Yes, um, yes.
You don't want that to, you don't want them to leave them there, you want all dog, don't you?
No, no, cut them down, just a big one right there.
And, but, Tommy, getting back to your, and, and I agree with you, but now, when the homeowner comes, and he's got a problem in the backyard, or the side, you know, are y'all gonna be able to help them too?
Yeah, we try to.
And I, I want to say that too, the city's ditches, I notice around here, they're wonderful, they look very cleaned out, and they keep them clean. And they keeping, you know, the public happy in the cities. You know, we put you commissioners in here to help us with such as this.
The lady has a, the lady that lives behind the, uh, Dixwings has, I mean, behind the, uh, car wash, has, has a swamp in her, on part of her property, this is gonna end that swamp.
I know what you're talking about.
So, she's very happy to give us the easement, and that's what we're working for.
What happens to every person in the county that wants something done now? Y'all gonna be able to do all that?
They're gonna do it for us.
Yeah, right. Lady really do.
I'd love to do that, and end up in a lawsuit. How about that? You gonna drag a lawsuit into it? It's gonna beckon pay you, then it's gonna break the county. Are you not that knowledgeable? You would agree with me, Black Carl? It's better to, to go ahead and take care of a problem, before it ends up into a lawsuit.
I think what he's trying to say, is that, uh, the water that comes onto our property and damages our property, you help, wouldn't that have, come in on y'all's side, isn't that what Mr. Shannon explained to you?
That it's called trust pass law.
Did he explain that to you?
No.
Or that, that county could end up eventually in a, being sued, because the water has damaged the property. See, the.
I understand about water damaging property and how it can be sued in certain instances, do I see it here, it's, no, I don't.
Then that's time for, if you don't see it, and they don't agree with me, that's time for a judge to sit with you.
I can't imagine a way to deal with that.
That's what that's going to do. So, that's why I'm here to get you fellas, to let's not go that route, let's clean the ditch.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm not.
I mean, you can, I understand, y'all, excuse yourself, but, ladies, your, your forehands.
Well, y'all know that I'm not doing nothing for one person, and I won't do it for everybody.
Exactly, you should, I agree with you.
But if you do nothing, nothing gets done.
But now, is the water coming off the state highway?
Yes. The state come in and cleaned out their part.
Cleaned out their part, where it's not into yours?
Exactly. Well, not really, it comes under, you know, the state road, onto my property. When it gets there to my property, there's no ditch for it to run in, to lead it on off of my property. So, it's all.
And if we come, and you tell me if I'm wrong, we come and dig yours, it's gonna run off your property, and somebody else?
It runs into, the stream goes around Ms. Montgomery's Pond, and on down, like I said before, you have tied, and goes through Beesley's, down by Bell Telephone, and then it crosses. I think it crosses there about where Bridgeford Church Road is just before that.
And also, it's not, it's not gonna cause no problems, no worries?
No, it should not cause any problems anywhere else.
The water only runs that way.
It runs that way, it's not like we're cutting new ditch through there. It's nature.
It's not, it's not, it's just trash.
Just trashy, but it's been a few years.
It is a same problem.
If it, if it, I mean, how to break that?
Well, they must cut that back, they were building houses, the only way I can figure that out.
And when you went and bought your property, you didn't, uh, notice there was a ditch, and it was covered up or anything?
See, when I put my mobile home out there, it was real, real dry, it was like a head drop season, and then here.
Now, I can't find words that is a county ditch. Now, if you can, show.
Well, they ain't, property ain't, nobody's, it's seventy-five inch county, on record. Check the record, and saved out in the rust behind the Flash Foods, to Beautiful Road.
Them lost the county.
And, and county, our home down, so, dark roads.
As long as we sign an easement, saying it's okay, come on to my property, I think a lot is, a lot of counties don't want to do it, because they don't want to end up in a lawsuit, because they're getting worried and damaged something. But my, now, he's signing that easement, that's saying, I'm giving y'all right, come on my property, if you damage something, then it's my responsibility to repair it.
And I, I may be wrong, and if I am part of you, tell, but I'm not a lawyer, to how they easement, he has to have it surveyed, and how much easement, and it has to be recorded, am I correct?
Yeah, they must have just.
Well, I mean, I, I don't.
In there, you've got to describe, you've got to estimate the amount.
We can't tell if it's thirty foot or eight, eighty foot, if it's not, you know, when somebody comes. Yeah, so it's surveyed out, and, and then it's recorded, about ten, twenty dollars, whatever, recorded.
We're not gonna donate our property to the county, that's what you're asking.
And there's an easement.
Which they're not gonna donate, you're asking for, they're asking to donate the property, that's not gonna happen.
I'm asking, we're asking you to give some easement, while we can go in there.
And that's where we said, we said for you to come in there, then, it goes right back to the lodge, you should know this. You're asking for our easement, for you to come in there, and you're saying, well, now, we on this property, we cleaned it out. Now, we're just giving you a temporary permission to come in there just to clean out the ditch.
So, you're saying that you will not give us an easement?
I'll give y'all right to come in there and clean it out.
That's an easement. We have to have an easement, if you want to have, we have to have an easement.
And clean out that ditch.
I'm gonna have to sign a legal document.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm willing to do that. And so, it's the other.
It won't be temporary there.
This is something that we've tried to get six years ago done. Everybody's willing to sign.
Easement is for.
That way, ten, twenty years from now, it's like up.
Well, I did ask, the, last time we were here, though, he was talking about giving our property up.
If you will do everything we, that we supposed to do, I'll willing to do it for you.
Well, I wouldn't have done legal.
That's called wire easement.
Well, that's her job, it's to draw an easement, like.
And the board here asked for us.
We have no problem with that.
But, am I wrong, the easement, if, if it's thirty foot, forty foot, whatever it takes, because you gotta go in there and not be in the ditch, and you got to dig up your trees, and then you gotta be able to dig out the trucks back then that carried the junk out.
You ain't got a carrier?
Well, just pile it up.
Pile it up on the outside.
On the offside, is he on land on the offside too, sweetie?
Uh, Ms. Peoples on that. She's with us, just what I'm saying. As a matter of fact, there's holes there. They can fill the dirt in. That's a big hole that's already been there back in the seventies, I guess, when they paved that road. Ms. Peoples donated dirt to the county to pave that first road, and I think second road. A call, I can probably explain that to you. Now, I'm giving them the opportunity to come over and dig that ditch through there, fill those holes back up.
If they wanted.
We're working with each other.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Toller, you, you don't mind if we put the trees on your side?
Absolutely not. There are a lot of missing in Gold.
That's not the offside. There, you're gonna create a problem there by backing up the water with trees laying there.
There's only one or two trees.
Sir?
There's only one or two trees. It's not like there's forty to fifty trees you got. Dust up there, just push it down here now, and it can pile up, burn them. It's just road that's running through there. It's holding the water back.
All right. If they got to be an easement and to have an easement, it'll have to be surveyed. All right. And then when it has to be recorded. So, all right, then when it's recorded, then by law, we got the right of way that we can go in there.
Who's gonna pay for the survey?
Well, I knew, I didn't know, I knew that. But if we apply for a permit and they looking on their geographic map and says, well, it ain't four hundred foot, three hundred foot, whatever, then they can just send a legal documentation permit, which you will be. All right.
Four hundred feet.
From the Davis Highway.
Three hundred feet, not three or four hundred yard.
Those lots were cut to two hundred by two hundred blocks. There you have it.
Yeah, it ain't, it ain't no three hundred yard, just three or four hundred.
About three hundred, about four hundred feet.
Okay, these, these costs, who's gonna incur these costs? Are y'all gonna incur at the county? Or y'all gonna make Mr. Toller incur these costs?
The county's gonna have to pay. That's what I pay taxes for. That's what we're talking about now.
You paid that, uh, road that you ran on for the value of property.
And that's what I was up before. I thought that's why we put you guys in here, is we have to keep the community out of it.
And you say.
My property value on my property. I mean, why is it so difficult to get something done? It's like going around Robin Hood's barn to get to the front door here. I don't understand that.
Well, maybe.
You know, now, now, back with me, this has been going on for six years. Imagine with this guy here over raised, if the woman actually deserved it. I mean, what is, what are you guys gonna do?
Probably you'll run next time, you might be here. But the main thing is, I'm not going on private, your property, if nobody, unless.
They've got it before.
No, no, I.
You, maybe you have. Well, maybe I'll wait another six years till you're out of here.
That's the way you're gonna have, I, I wait that long.
Yeah, that's right. You have the election.
Yeah, I didn't come in to retire. I come in to do the best I can do for the county. All citizens.
Well, then clean out this ditch.
For you, for a favor.
It ain't for a favor.
Then what is?
It's for sixteen other people that's asking you to do it.
I mean, weren't, weren't they on that same lane that you did?
They don't. But it take the water off of their properties.
If you take it off sixteen more and yours, that water's gotta go somewhere else. And, and the ditch, you walk in the ditch, it's good, it's gonna carry that water. Right, said it's always up behind this, is it not fresh?
It's a little bit in the corner, though.
Okay, but I'm.
Mine's on the hill.
But, but then, it, it. If we open it up and send all sixteen people down there.
I think most of them want six thousand by across the highway.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, it ought to.
Have them people, we want to have them people complaining about something I did, Charlie. Because now, if you open it up there where mine's is, like me and Steve have taught, you get that opened up and it's gonna take care of the problem up the hills. The water's back.
Well, I agree with you up the hill. You're right, it's making them go, but they won't reach up that hill, dude.
Well, if they are, they live in all that swamp.
Not a good problem.
They're, he's uphill.
All right, who's gonna furnish the documentation? If we're going to do it, or what, what, we don't know.
Spit it out, guys. Come on.
And I tell you, we're gonna do the same as long as I'm up here for everybody.
And you should.
If they sixteen, then you want that done, stake all these ones, y'all just go ahead and hire somebody. You could hire it for about three or four hundred dollars.
Then why and how do we got y'all up here? That's, that's technically, we have to take care of the properties to keep our property values up.
Well, we got a letter from Carl. Carl said it's not the county's property.
And the state's gonna mean otherwise.
I'm gonna buy, he said, yes, the larger, look it up, you look it up and say, we don't own the property. And you come up and try to strong go like the way you do it. But, uh, that, that's where we at. Is the, where at is not the county's property.
It's not the county's property. I agree with you there, but it's the county's responsibility to keep that water off me according to the state. Now, I don't make these laws. The state of Georgia.
You see that? I ain't seen that right here.
That's from the state of Georgia. Department of Human Resources. Natural Resources, I'm sorry. Here's something that I don't think, this battle's not a show, y'all are. That's the law, that's where it got, got sued, filed suit in what case.
We can't find what county, this county dug, that would be a record.
So you'd have to have an easement.
Just a state one.
So what you're saying to them, Carl, you run a battle or lawsuit?
That's sure, I'm not saying that to them.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, they get eight, but then we can do, if we get eight.
Do you think so? It's, it has to be. I mean, get a, whatever amount of land that we need to get in there to dig. And he said, we could leave the trees, I mean, it'd be less labor, you know, y'all can do it, but, um, gotta have easement. It's gotta be recorded because somebody else comes up here, look, it's gonna be on the deed book. Or you could change it the way it's always been. I mean, we can't even push somebody's dirt in their driveway as far as that doorway, because we got twenty foot right of way off the road. And there's a big hole, and they have to buy their own dirt. So now, if we're gonna start this, we're gonna have to change and we're gonna have to get more people in the road department to go to work.
And you should. I think you should. Keep the community up. And it's like I said before, I'm not even here to ask you, I just had them all come out. I mean, that's your, 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 your four hundred foot ditch.
Let's just say now, it's right. I think.
That's what you're talking about. When you start talking about adding equipment, the personnel at the road department talks about increasing taxes.
How many employees does the county employ?
About eighty-nine.
What's your annual budget this year?
Eight million, eight million and a half.
No, the actual, you have the actual number?
Of what?
The actual number of y'all's, what, what is your budget coming this year?
We don't have, we're working on that.
The one we're talking about this year starts July. We have not finalized it and got it down to what that, we've got another workshop.
The deal right now.
What are they paying you a year?
Sixty thousand.
Okay.
What do you make a year? What do you make a year?
I make about one thousand dollars a year, what I live off of. Y'all want me to sing on that ditch? That's your number?
You're, you know, if you're.
You're sending, they're sending you to school to run this county. It's, don't you think it's costing taxpayers? I don't think they'd like that too much.
Why would any taxpayer want to take for a ditch to be dug on your property? Tell me that. Why, why would you have any?
Oh, Gary, yeah, we, we ain't down here for that. If, uh, the rest of y'all can read that and see what you wanna do, and, uh, and then we can go on. Maybe you should get a lawyer or two, or if you want to do it.
It's not gonna be just me. It's gonna be the sixteen people, too.
Let's get it. That's your last call, don't you? Whatever.
It'd be benefits for her.
I mean, why?
It's job security for her, and she knows that.
Uh, she gonna be working for.
Mr. Toller, you didn't ask me what I'm gonna.
All right, I thought you meant. No, that's what you charged them. You know, you charged the county that, and the taxidermist, maybe you want to get ready to do that to this. Good money.
I, I've seen, I've, I listened to you for three months. Well.
I mean, I've been begging, please, five years.
As long as we've come up here, I've been thinking about it. I've thought about it often, though. And just to, I would like to just say, if he can get the easement, and then he get the survey.
He can pay for the survey.
He paid for the survey. I'm willing to do, I'm willing to go and do this because it'll be up here again next month, same thing.
I'm not going away. You're right. I'm doing that for those other sixteen people, not just for myself. Those lot of people that are able to come up here and.
But I would think they not want to do it for more than the county.
Is that what you mean? There's one woman came up here and called me several times because she said you coerced her into signing that. An elderly woman. She was an elderly woman.
Who is she?
I can't remember her name.
I thought so.
My next question is, if I get the survey in there tomorrow, I think I'll be starting on the stage.
Well, I, I can tell you, we talk rough, I mean, I'll tell you. Core engineer would be the first thing. If I was you, hey, it's your business and your money. You do what you want to do. But I got the letter from core engineer that we already, and said that we could go in there.
All right, that's just a skip a hot rough street right there. I go over and get her to pipe up a letter to give to this one and give you copy saying she has nothing else to do with this.
That soil and water conservation.
Yes, too.
You, you, that's, that's two different departments. You, you understand that?
No, I thought that's, that's.
Core engineer is totally different when you go into wetland or you go into any.
It is not wetlands.
Well, anytime you dig, you got to talk to core engineer. Whether you digging on or canal or whatever, the coordinator, core engineers have to approve that ditch.
I thought that's why my state representative sent me to the Department of Human Resources. Because the core had nothing to do with it because it's not wetlands.
The letter that you received, that you sent Carl, that Carl sent us, says that the core of engineers will have to approve that.
What letter did you get?
Did I say that?
I don't see no letter like that.
I sent you a letter. Gentlemen's suggestion from the D N R that we need to get it from, we're engineers, we need to do anything just to cover us. Does he think that they're, are they all wetlands? No, he does not believe so in his past experience. However, in order to cover the county, that will be what we need to do.
Well, you need to get a letter from core engineer. Easement, and you got to pay for the survey. That's all I'm saying about this property out there. That's it.
All right. Anybody got anything else? I'm caducating. That, I'm gonna need a motion to go into second session. I have a motion to go into second session. I don't know. Motion, second, everybody, vote. Uh, we went into closed session to discuss litigation on land, uh, acquisition. And Jerry has, uh, found a place for a fire station. Now, he gives there, has talked to Charles and did this, where they wanted it. And, um, Jerry's talked to the landowner and.
I, I've talked to the lady and she's willing to let us have one acre of land. I've done have Mr. Charles come out and look at it. Said the ideal spot, and she's willing to sell it to us for just what we've been paying the other people, three thousand dollars a acre. And, uh, so we're going to go ahead and I'm gonna make the motion that we don't, bottom piece of property.
Motion, Jerry, second, motion, all in favor. Is that, nothing else, and we can go.
Paying rent with me?
Paying go. I'm going with you.